To the Village Bartlett, we have a public hearing this evening. The certificate of publication from the Daily Herald which evidences that the notice of the public hearing was duly published on March 8, 2017, which meets the statutory prerequisites which require that the notice of the public hearing be published between seven and thirty days before the public hearing be entered into the record. The tentative budget has been available to the public for inspection for not less than thirty days. So with that, I call the public hearing to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We'll turn it over to Paula.
Mayor and Board, I have just a brief summary for this portion of the public hearing. The proposed revenues for fiscal 2017-18 total seventy-five point five million and includes twenty-seven point nine million in borrowing for capital projects. The remaining revenues are divided among property taxes, other taxes, service charges, and other revenues. The proposed general property tax levy is to remain flat from last year. This is the fifth consecutive year that the levy has remained flat or declining. The total proposed budget for fiscal 2017-18 is eighty-eight point four million. This is an increase of sixty-five percent from last year. We reduced the proposed operating budget by sixty-six thousand four hundred and five dollars for the adjustments made by the board at last week's budget review. We also added forty-five thousand for the Cook County issue regarding the Northwest Mosquito Abatement District. The total operating budget is forty-one point nine million, which is a three-point-nine percent increase from last year. The overall budget increase is primarily due to the increase in capital projects, including the Lake Michigan Water Project. The increase in the operating portion of the budget is mainly for the increase in the debt service for the 2016 police station bonds. Operating expenditures can be divided into five primary uses. A little over two-thirds of the operating expenditures is for public safety and public works, which includes streets, water, sewer, and parking. The remaining third is divided among general government, golf, and debt. The capital portion of the proposed budget is forty-six point five million. The capital portion of the budget varies from year to year based on the individual projects we have scheduled. Capital projects of the budget are divided into five broad categories: water, sewer, streets, economic development, golf, and other. Nineteen million of the proposed capital projects in the 2017-18 budget relates to the Michigan, the Lake Michigan Water Project. Nine point six million is related to the police station construction. Other projects include the annual streets maintenance program, improvements at the Brewster Creek and Bluff City Tiff developments, and the wastewater treatment plant improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Does the Board have any questions? Hearing none, is there any comments from the public or questions? Hearing none, I will move along. I entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Cammer, second by trustee Danny. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Village Bartlett Board meeting for March 21, 2017. I call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We have requested Pastor Tim Chen of the Village of Bartlett to do our invocation this evening. Pastor Chen?
I'd invite you to pray with me. Father, I thank you for this board, the Board of Bartlett, and I just thank you for the mayor, all these elected and volunteer officials in their various roles. I thank you for our chief of police and chief of fire and how they serve our community with dignity, with honor, and with many times a lack of thankfulness on our parts as citizens of this community. Lord, we thank you for each of these members that is sitting on this board, the decisions, the discussion that goes on tonight. I pray that you'll give them wisdom, that you'll allow them insight. Those that will be speaking at this podium tonight to voice difference of opinions or thoughts or ideas to the board, may you give them clarity in their words and an ability to express their viewpoints with honor and respect to one another. I thank you that we live in a community where we can worship you freely, that we can honor our elected officials, and, Lord, we can see you at work in many different ways. Thank you for this time, and may it be meaningful to our community as it is to each of us that hold the responsibility of decisions for this community, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Chen. And we have Troop 99 here this evening. If you guys wouldn't mind leading us in the Pledge Allegiance, that would be great.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, and welcome. And we have to ask everyone here for a little patience. This is our first attempt at, some people call it the 21st century. I think maybe we just finally got into these electronic things, and sometimes they can be tricky, so. Next item we have this evening is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk on the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items. At this point, is there anything the board member would like to add to the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to add items A1 and 2 to the planning and, or to the consent agenda, please.
Okay. Anybody have any problems? Anything else?
The zoning ordinance is, that's the chicken and bees.
Yeah.
Pardon? Yeah, let's leave that off of the consent agenda, if you would, please.
Okay. So items A2. Anything else? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda, which will include the board minutes from the March 7, 2017 meeting, the committee minutes from February 21 and March 7, 2017 meetings. The consent will also include the bills list from March 21, 2017. The consent agenda will also include item 12C Finance and Golf Committee, or actually 12A1, A2 Brewster Creek Business Park Lot M9M. It will include 12C Finance and Golf Committee Brewster Creek Tiff Project Fund payout number two. It will include 12E1 and 2, sale of surplus property by internet auction and sale of surplus property by eBay auction. The consent will also include 12F under Public Works 1, 2, and 3, sale of surplus property by internet auction, 2017 MFT project, bridge maintenance and construction engineering, and 2017 MFT project Sterns Road Culver Extension and Construction Engineering. Second. It's moved by trustee Hopkins, second by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. By trustee Carbonaro, second by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next this evening, our treasurer's report. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you. Including your packet, this week was the January treasurer's report. There was nothing unusual to report in the January report. We are still watching the revenues, especially in regard to the state shared income tax, which has continued to be behind, as we talked about earlier at this review. In regard to MFT motor fuel tax, this month had ninety-seven thousand dollars, which was up four thousand seven hundred dollars. On the year, though, we're down four thousand dollars compared to last year, which is just under one percent. Sales tax for the month, two-hundred-and-seven thousand, that's up two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars, just one point three from the prior month. Year-to-date, though, we're up almost seventy thousand dollars from the prior year, which is up five percent. That's all to report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Anybody got any questions for the treasurer? Hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. The next item we have this evening is our president's report. There is none this evening. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of our meeting. Town hall portion of the meeting allows anybody from the audience to step up to the podium to discuss anything with the board. Please state your name and address. For the record, is there anybody who would like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to our standing committee reports. First standing committee report this evening is Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have only one outstanding item. Item number one, the zoning ordinance updates for chapters 2 and 4A, which we discussed at length. So as a preliminary matter, let me make a motion. I move to approve ordinance 2017 dash?
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four. An ordinance amending the Bartlett zoning ordinance, Chapter 4A Residential Districts and Chapter 2 Rules and Definitions.
Second. It's moved by trustee Ranky, second by trustee Cammer. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I think we need to reevaluate since we've had lengthy discussions over this. We discussed the chickens at length. We kind of schmoozed over the beekeeping, though. We've had no pros or cons regarding beekeeping, but the recommendation from the zoning board is a full acre property. We've gone down all the way to a quarter acre. I think we should reevaluate that and take into consideration the zoning board's recommendation of a full acre.
I disagree. I think that we've researched, the staff has researched this from other cities, and they know that this is an issue that is, the only reason that we expanded to an acre or half acre would be out of fear for no reason, and I think we need to move forward with the staff recommendations.
I'd have to agree with that. I think staff has done a remarkable job with giving us, I think, more information than we probably needed, and the residents have thrown volumes about this, these ordinance changes, and I think we should leave it as is.
I agree.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
No.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have for planning and zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item on standing committee reports this evening is Building Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There is nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have on our agenda this evening is Under Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Danny.
Mr. President, the item that we had Brewster Creek Tiff Project Fund was covered under the consent agenda. We have nothing else to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Danny. Next item on understanding committee reports is the License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Erins.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is no outstanding items in our committee.
Thank you, Chairman Erins. Next item on understanding committee reports is Under Police and Health Committee Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Both items were covered under the consent agenda. Thank you.
Chairman Carbonaro. Finally, standing committee reports is Public Works Committee Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five things under the public works this evening, three of which have been put to the consent agenda. The first starts off with the 2017 motor fuel tax, Ruzika Park Field Parking Lot, of which we've discussed, and we now have the, enclosed as the MFT resolution for consideration by the village board to direct funds for the use in the, if I stay on it, 2017, 2018 Ruzika Field Parking Lot Construction Engineering, and the attached resolution being submitted for the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Any unused amounts will be credited back to the MFT account for use on other projects. That being said, I would move the village board approve resolution 2017 dash?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, a resolution authorizing the use of motor fuel tax funds at the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for the fiscal year 2017 and 2018 motor fuel tax program to pay for the cost of construction and engineering for the Ruzika Field Parking Lot Project and to authorize the village clerk to sign said MFT resolution.
Second.
It's moved by trustee Cammer, second by trustee Erins. Is there any discussion?
Well, I've had some issues with it, as I mentioned from the very beginning, and I thought that it was quite a high amount to be paying for the parking lot. I asked for the public works to come back with other alternatives, of which we did get something, basically saying it was going to cost more money and not be as stable of a paving material to try something different, but I still see it as being a lot of money to spend on a parking lot.
It is a lot of money to spend on a parking lot. Is there any way we could do some value engineering on this and, or maybe do it in phases? Is there some alternatives to spending six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars?
You can phase it. It'd just be a matter of, you know, building half of it on the, say, the closest to the field section and leaving the south half gravel. It'd just be a matter of, whenever you decide to do the second half, it'll end up costing more because you've got two setups and cost-wise, so if you're ultimately going to pave it, the cost would go up, but it's possible to phase.
Well, I have a question about the agenda packet. So page 211 is an IDOT form. It looks like a resolution in the amount of two-hundred-and-five thousand dollars. And then when you forward in the packet, and we're talking about Ruzika Park, at page 214, it looks like that same, same resolution is there. Is that same resolution in there twice? Am I not seeing this right? Should we have a separate resolution for Ruzika Park?
I think we got, that resolution is actually for the item above or before. We must have had a...
Because I'm looking at it, I think it's in there twice.
Right.
Because then my next question is, do we have to have a resolution for Ruzika Parking Lot?
Yes.
Because I'd like to see what that's going to look like before I vote on that. I agree with trustee Cammer and trustee Hopkins. Trustee Ranky, I'm not sure. We did have one from IDOT. It looks very similar to the other two that are in the packet. I would assume there's a mix-up either on my part or somewhere along the line. It's, it was filled out and it's set to go. They all look the same. I think that's why... Yeah, yeah. The, it would be very similar to the one that's in there, except, as you said, it's a repeat of one of the other MFT projects. It does read six-seventy-five. It hasn't been authorized yet by IDOT because it comes here first. So I can, I can find it and make sure you see it. Yeah, well, yeah, I think that that's important, especially because it's six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. And I can certainly see how that can happen, especially when we're just new to this technology, so.
Well, it's a big, it's a large area to pave, so it does involve quite a bit of asphalt, but part of it is, as we talked about it during the capital, is we're trying to avoid doing stormwater detention, and it looks like, based on the history of what's been there, it's been a gravel lot for years and years and years. It looks like we will be able to avoid stormwater, actual stormwater detention, but we do need to do best management practices, which involves bio-sweals, basically, so we'll have some storm sewer, and then bio-sweals, which will help clean the stormwater that drains from that parking lot. But it is a large, I mean, it's a large area, so it does take a lot of money to get that done. It also includes curb, does not include lighting at this time, so.
Dan, I wanted to ask you a question about that, too. That's a great deal of money. We all know that. The, what does life expects to see of this? How long will this, this parking lot last before it needs major renovation again?
A parking lot, you should be able to get in that twenty-five-year range before you have to do a whole lot of work. You might have to do some patching at that point.
Right, minor.
But I mean, it should last quite a while.
Do you know when the last time was we spent any money out there?
We, from time to time, as the holes get dug from the gravel, we have to go out there and kind of put some more gravel down, so we do spend some time there. Material-wise, it's not a lot, but it's guys' time. And then the only other item that we really address is the fence along the west side there that's in need, that, with the winds that we just had not too long ago, we had some sections come down, so we're replacing sections there. But the rest of the park itself is maintained by baseball and football associations.
Dan, do we have a road grader or anything like that in the city?
We, other than Skidster and that, we don't really have a grader. We have a, we have a paving machine, but this would be something much larger than we...
So somebody could come in with a grader and just grade the gravel and flatten it out and, and put on another layer of gravel on top of it for the time being?
It's pretty much what we've been doing with, with the equipment that we, that we currently have. We basically go out there and put out more stone and level it out, fill the holes.
That's relatively cost-free, basically?
Yeah.
Is there different types of gravel that can be installed that might be a little more better on vehicles?
We've basically, I think lately we've been using grindings, which is just ground-up asphalt, which tends to, especially during the summer when the sun gets on it, it tends to stick together better because it still has some asphalt material in it, and that, that holds up better, but it still ultimately is gravel. And in a parking lot, you've got the tires turning all the time. That's what tears it, that's why the tire and chip idea, when we started looking at it, it's still gravel, and when you get those tires turning on it, it ends up raveling, so.
You know, I'd really like to add something in here, just a little institutional knowledge, that Ruzika Fields was dedicated, I believe, some twenty-seven years ago. And at that time, Bartlett had a huge, huge Little League program. That program has done, has been nothing but successful throughout all the years, and the village was instrumental in, in being able to get this land for the Little League. Little League has maintained that field. They built their own dugouts. They, whatever needed to be done was done by Little League and then football. I think that after so long a time, the Village of Bartlett could afford to help them out and give them a parking lot that won't be nickel and diming us to death and that will show the pride that we have in our Little League and football programs. And I think that this would be a great gift to them and one that we can surely, and don't call me surely, I know, one that we could, that we should be proud to do for them.
I agree, trustee Erins. Having been on that, in that parking lot many, many times and almost taking the under part of my car out, it's amazing we haven't gotten sued from opposing teams that come in there and run over one of those obsolete, like, I don't know if you guys have ever been over there, but they've got those cement things that are like crooked, and sometimes there's some railroad ties that are trying to organize things. It's, it's a mess, and it's pretty amazing that a kid hasn't gotten ran over in that parking lot because there's, cars are parking angled, they're parking along the grass, they're parking everywhere. And it's not, it's every, every weekend from April or so all the way through the football season, so. I agree with trustee Erins. I also agree that it's, it's a lot of money. What other earmarks do we have for MFT funds? I mean, is there anything?
We've got the, I mean, we've always got the road program, the Box Culver Project that will hopefully be awarding shortly, but mainly geared towards the road programs, so.
How far would the six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand going to paving actual roads within town?
We typically do around nine, nine-hundred to a million dollars every year, so it, it's almost, if, if the, and right now, knock on wood, our bids have been coming in low, so with any luck, it would come in lower, but if it came in at budget, then it's three-quarters of a year's worth of roads.
Just look at the timing of it, too. I think with the water and the police department...
So we have a motion, and this, what you're looking for here, Dan, is a resolution to be on the next board agenda, and that would actually be in action where we discuss it again? Is that what we're trying to do here?
Unfortunately, the resolution isn't in there, so I guess we'll have to bring it back next meeting.
What's your best, I know you wrote in some of your notes here that that's the maximum it could cost, so there, there's any chances that it could come in at four-fifty or five-hundred thousand?
You never know. Yeah, we hope so. I mean, we're trying to keep the engineering down as much as possible because that number also includes the engineering, so trying to keep that down. We still have to get permitted through ComEd and all that stuff, so this isn't scheduled to go until late summer, fall, anyway, but we were bringing all the other MFT resolutions in, and unfortunately, we got it mixed up, but we can bring it back next meeting, no problem.
Is this something we could engineer in-house?
It's a little bigger than what we would typically get ourselves involved in. It's been surveyed, and the whole bio-sway, and all that, we don't have the expertise on all that part of it. But as far as, you know, a parking lot and stuff like that, yeah, we could do some of that stuff, but when you get into a large parking lot like this, it's probably something that we would typically hire someone to do.
You know, I, I just want to add one other thing because, because, it's just me. Do you know that Bartlett Little League was the biggest, most successful Little League for quite a number of years? I don't know if it still is, and maybe somebody in the audience can correct me on that, but the biggest Little League in the United States. This says a lot for the Bartlett Little League, and I, I just want to support them. Okay, thanks. That's it.
I do as well, and being as we have issue with the resolution confusion, I would entertain a motion to table this until the next meeting. So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Erins, second by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Erins?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That carries. That item is tabled for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on our agenda is the water and sewer rate increases, and perhaps I can turn that over to staff just to review that briefly. Whoever would like to.
Thank you. We did talk about, a couple weeks ago, we reviewed how we're gearing up for the Lake Michigan Water Transfer. We talked about the fund balances in, in the water and the sewer funds and how we've been using fund balance for the last few years for the capital, capital projects, improvements to water mains, the sewer line rehabilitation program. So this twenty percent increase in the water is, is a start, and most of, most of that ninety, nine-hundred thousand dollars or seventy percent of the increase is the beginning of the engineering for the, for the transition to the Lake Michigan. increase is the beginning of the engineering for the transition to the Lake Michigan Water. We're going to need to reevaluate the rates next year as the IEPA loans and the DuPage Water Commission loans all start to take shape, but we talked about earlier, the water rates will be doubling, and so this is only a fraction of that as we get started in the water rates. That will bring the, the current rate is $6.36 per 1,000 gallons. That would go up to $7.64 per 1,000 gallons. There are some, we did include the comparables and the towns back there. Again, as far as the sewer, same thing. We've been using, we've been using fund balance, the fund balance is getting below our policy level. We're increasing this, we're cutting back on the sewer line rehabilitation program for this year, but there's still, as I scroll through my thing here, there's still preliminary work that's being done on the Devon Excess Flow Facility, and then we also have, we're going to, a little bit of the sewer rehabilitation program, the grant program. This also covers part of the IEPA loans for work that's already been done at the treatment The rates are different as far as Cook County and DuPage County, and the rate will go from 77 cents a 1,000 gallons plus a fixed amount of $9.21 in Cook County, it will go up to 92 cents per 1,000 gallons plus the $1.05 fixed in Cook County. In DuPage County, it's $1.94 per 1,000. That'll go up to $2.33 per 1,000 gallons plus. It will go to the $13.12 flat rate. And then at the end, then, a typical bill for 6,000 gallons in Cook County will go from $51.99 up to $62.41. That's an increase of $10.42 in Cook County. DuPage County, a typical bill, $60.65, go up to $72.84. That's $12.19 increase if these rates are approved.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dan. That being said, I would move the passage of ordinance 2017 dash?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, an ordinance amending the Bartlett Municipal Code Regarding Water and Sewer Charges.
Second. Moved by trustee Cammer, second by trustee Ranky. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaronz?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have under public works this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cammer. Next item we have this evening is new business. Is there any new business anybody would like to discuss at this time?
I have one comment I'd like to make, if I may. We had a little event the other day at Bartlett Hills, and Paul, I'm glad you're here, it was on Sunday, and the bartender was totally overwhelmed. I mean, it was just a crowd they couldn't believe, and I'd like to compliment Mary for her efforts in keeping that together and leaving her duties in the back room and coming out and assisting, because without her help, it really would have been a madhouse. So I just would like the board to recognize Mary for her efforts that she put forward this past Sunday.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, we'll be moving directly into the committee the whole meeting. Moved by trustee Danny, second by trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We're adjourned.